That's been kind enough to volunteer to do something. That is the mark of a gentleman, though, when he says, "I'm there for you." And then you stick your head. He's going to voice our prayer, and I think it's Bob Marcy starting to lead our pledge allegiance. We do appreciate all our visitors and all of our regulars, and of which Mr. Sides is one, so we do appreciate him.
Thank you. Please bow your head in for prayer, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we gather here this evening and want us to be thankful for the many blessings that you bestowed, have bestowed upon us throughout the week, throughout the years. And let the council be led, guided to make good decisions for the city. And we ask thee, Satan, in your son's name, Jesus, amen.
Please join in our pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Situated up here. We'll open up the regular meeting of the Clinton Hospital Authority, Clinton Recreational Authority, Clinton Industrial Authority, Clinton Solid Waste Authority, and Clinton Airport Authority. And we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Huglen?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes, moving on to the City Manager's Report. First, I don't have any action items, so Steve, any reports ready from these authorities?
I don't have any.
Okay. Any audience participation in any of these authorities? This would be your opportunity, and the Airport Authority, Solid Waste, Recreational, and Hospital authorities, if you have any, if you have any comments relating to those authorities, this would be the place where you'd make them. Your comments would be welcome at this time from the audience. If not, we will move on to, well, entertain a motion for adjournment of these authorities.
Trustee Huglen?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. Moving on, we'll open up the regular meeting of the Clinton Public Works Authority and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Trustee Huglen?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. I've said this oftentimes, the consent agenda is operational business. That's been presented to the council beforehand to review. Of course, if there is ever any comment or concern, the council members always have a chance to step in and bring that up. That's, as we do ask for a motion to approve, which always had the ability to voice your opinion if you have a concern. We'll move on to the first action item, affirm expenditure by Clinton Public Schools Board of Education to Jody Hall. And this is a continuation of several of these we've done, related to the facilitation we did to help the school be able to actually accomplish more than their bonding would allow them to without the support of the city. And several of these, any questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this particular action item? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve this expenditure by the Clinton Public Schools Board of Education to Jody Hall.
Second. Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Huglen?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. Moving on, City Manager's Report for the Public Works Authority. Under that authority, if we could get an update on, I know it gets a little bit watered, what's your thought process on that? And we, I don't know, continue to move dirt, any kind of a general update?
Yeah, basically, we continue to run the bulldozer. I will say this, I did attend the Foss Conservancy, and a meeting last night, as they are looking at a master plan, long-term, they're interviewing engineers last night, so I think that's a very good, good move. And we'll continue to work with them on some of the long-term things. We're going to, we're going to continue to look, we are still exploring things like the well, some water, and around Clinton Lake, those locations. So that continues, not a lot of detail, except that we're exploring those opportunities and trying to, when we find options, we'll bring it to you. At this point, we just continue our, our options that we've been working on.
Do you guys see an increase in the, I know there is a crack in the ground that flows water, spring? There is some spring, do we see an increase in the size of either the upper lakes or the Clinton Lake because of that, or is it somewhere?
Jeremy actually went out this morning, the South Pond is about to run over, he was running over the spill, wind was blowing over the spillway this morning. And there is a stream running into the West Pond. We haven't had that in several months, but there is a small stream running into the, to the West Pond, so that's good.
I have a question. Do we know how much, if it would rain five inches tomorrow, how much dirt, how much water could be put in because of the dirt we're removing? Do you have any idea how much you would hold that?
Uh, we've roughly removed about two million, it would hold about two million gallons more. Fifty thousand gallons a day, and we do it five days a week. And we, we went about two months.
I appreciate the information, that's just for my own heads. It's one of those things that this time of year has always got to be on our minds, and I know we have rain in the forecast, I think for the next five days. And I would encourage everybody to say your prayers, because God's been right two out of two, he's back, he's put them out of the park. So I'm hoping Don wrote off, the councilman wrote off his prayer.
I have a question.
Okay.
I see our Oakbridge was eighty-five thousand water this month. How do we stand with the rate, with our rate increase, or is it already detailed?
Well, Steve and I looked over that yesterday, and for that whole, what we've spent in Oakbridge since July 1 through the end of January was four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. That's quite a bit more than we ever estimated we would spend in Oakbridge. What we're bringing in in revenue, our cash flow balances have still declined some, but it was basically in those first three, four months when we had not implemented that water rate increase. We didn't start that really a substantial amount until I believe it hit on the first November building, was when that rate increase went up. And we had taken quite a hit in July, August, September numbers. So we are down, based on that, about two-hundred thousand dollars, based on those three months. Our cash balance forward from July 1 had dropped about two-hundred thousand before we started implementing. Now, we're, we're breaking even, it's kind of a little bit iffy, we're, we're close to breaking even, I think.
I think one of the things that Arnold will tell you is that we can't control leaks, and so if our infrastructure sometimes has those kind of things, we have to spend money to fix those things. So if we, if we don't have leaks, we don't have those costs, we're trying to be very conservative in our expenditures, but sometimes we just have those things. So that, that, that varies, and I guess you could say the profit-loss surplus of, of the fund, so.
Sorry, guys. I should be there. Good question. I think probably it's on the minds of everybody, and I know we keep it in our front of our minds, I know you guys are doing that for us, but sometimes it helps also to ask. Any other questions or comments by council? Any questions or comments from the audience? This would be your opportunity, if you have a question relating to Public Works Authority, be your opportunity to ask that question, and we'd be glad to entertain. Arnold, you have a comment?
We float the water onto White Dog Hill today, it's going to be tied into his restaurant tomorrow.
Excellent.
Meat is sad, everything's ready to go, so it will be tied in tomorrow.
It's exciting. I appreciate the effort, I know Arnold's tried to stay on top of it, stimulate things, and move our contractor, and I appreciate the effort you've put into it. I know, you know, sometimes when, that's why I like the Northeast Waterline side, you know, you see a project that large, and you think, man, that could get out of hand and slow down, and just start to stall. And I think it was amazing, so I appreciate the effort you put in, even though it's taking us a little longer than we want to, I'm sure you'll be thrilled.
Bring me to see water around, leave the pipe up for the bottom restaurants.
Yeah, I'm sure, because I'm sure you've talked to, I'm sure you've talked to the folks at White Dog way more than I have, so I appreciate it, though, thank you. And I think that'll be a good, a good future up there for the folks at the White Dog, I look forward to getting back out there and eating. Any other comments or questions for the Public Works Authority? Not seeing any, then at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Public Works Authority.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Huglen?
Yes.
And Chairman.
Yes. Moving on to the regular meeting of the Clinton City Council, I believe it's March the 6th, but here we are, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. First action item, Consider a Recommendation Regarding Police Department Renovation. It's, Steve, I know you've got some comments for us here, and let you go through.
Council, basically, I've put a tremendous amount of documentation in the agenda package, and I hope you had a chance to go through it. But basically, the due diligence will be turned over to the architect, the recommendations, as you see, with Conde Construction, of the basement of five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. We're recommending alternate one and three, so those two alternates we're recommending. We are going to continue doing some value engineering with Conde Construction, bring down the base, and then come back, we believe we'll do, we will come back on alternate, on the signage alternates, but we believe it will be a less amount. Alter number two, the ice maker, we are exploring options, doing a refrigerator ice machine, as the chief is evaluating how much actual ice does the PD go through and need, so we're deterring that. So we may check in some of that in-house, as well as the gun rack and gun lockers, that'll be in the FFNE budget. So if you look at the updated budget, this will meet our budget requirements. Get to that page, I can, which equals, you can see that Architect, Engineering, Asbestos, Removable Contingency, we remain at contingency of sixty thousand. Because I want to make sure with, with any kind of rehab project, with experience in double fat, some unknowns can typically come up. If they, if they do not, then we'll have additional dollars for either change orders, and also they could roll over to the fire budget to cover some death service. But we always want to make sure to have that contingency during the project. But we would basically, to summarize, we'd like to write in Conde Construction, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand base bid, alternate one of ninety-nine hundred, and alternate three of twenty-two hundred, a total of five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars for the police project. Is that, is that alternate number two or number three? It is actually alternate number three, but it will be the number two of alternate three. Jeff actually, if you look at his, he said alternate one and two, it's actually alternate one and alternate number three. Basically, alternate one being the shower room, and alternate number three, I'm sorry, being the exterior lighting. That will reduce, we plug in the value engineering, alternate two, we'll look at a new ice maker, alternate four will be in an FFNE, and it is two-hundred days of completion, if you notice that. On the, on the front of this sheet, I'm, I'm just making sure that I've got myself clear, it says, we're going to, we're going to have a base bid of five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, we're going to do alternate one at nine-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, and we're going to do alternate three at twenty-two hundred, or alternate two at twenty-two hundred dollars? I'm sorry, it is alternate number two. Yeah, the ice maker is what we're going to do. Let me go back here. Yeah, also, I'm going to, I'm actually, I apologize, I, I do not, talking to the chief, I may, I may not relate this to Jeff, so I appreciate you bringing this up. I would actually recommend alternate one only, and not alternate ice maker, because I believe the chief brought to me, I may not relate this to Jeff, that we believe we can do this for a less amount. So I'm actually going to, I apologize, I didn't get that in my recommendation in time, but I'm just going to recommend alternate one, nine-nine hundred. So forty-seven, five-forty-seven base, and alternate ninety-nine hundred, and we move twenty-two hundred dollar ice maker, we'll do that in-house. We may come bring that back to you, but we may do that through our FFNE budget as well.
Thanks, Bill. Five-seventy-four?
Five-seventy.
I'm walking on the page here. Okay, where are we?
I got my.
That's okay.
Five-seventy-four.
It's five-seventy-four.
Five-seventy-four.
Yeah, sure, my, my commentary is completely wrong, so.
It is a massive.
We've been working on this for.
Well, it's obvious you're trying to cut the pace to make sure that it's.
Five-eighty-three-nine.
Five-eighty-three-nine. Probably for the base and then alternate one.
So basically, we're taking the five-seventy-four, five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, and the nine-nine hundred, which is alternate one, the shower. Okay, we'll work through that, it's not bad. And any questions or comments relating to anything else here from council with?
Chief, how disruptive will this be down in your department, following the jail, but it's got to be pretty much, what do you do with prisoners?
Well, when we get to that point, we've made arrangements with the Sheriff's Department to house any inmates that we may have. We have several plans in effect, when we get to the dispatch, we're going to move them. As far as the general public is concerned, they won't see anything other than they'll have to come in another door. For the employees, it's going to be a balance, but we accept, so it'll get, it'll be disruptive, but we'll still function.
I would just like to say, too, that on February fifteenth, the City Manager, Steve and I, took a tour of the facility, and I, I will tell you that, from my point of view, never been inside that facility, it isn't, it isn't dire, it isn't dire need of some, of some work. And I, I'm really, I'm really glad that this is part of the project that, that is included with the tax, so it's really, really needed down there. Those people do a great job, and it's, the conditions are, need to be upgraded.
Well, now, am I correct, this is never been, it had done damage since it was built? Is that what we said before?
There's been minor.
I mean, real minor.
Minor still, that's what I'm saying.
Well, there was.
Well, I think it's neat that, and I think it goes back to the leadership Steve showed, has shown with the sales tax. There are a lot of competing things that would like to be done, we, we probably each could make a laundry list of things that we could spend sales tax money on, but I think it's, it's impressive that that's one he came up with in short order, and then the Fire Department, I don't think there are any questions, we've talked about that quite a bit, so pretty exciting. Any other questions related to this? We're talking about the five-seventy-four, and then the alternate number one at ninety-nine hundred, that is a recommendation from staff. Any questions from staff, from the council? Not seeing any in questions from anyone in the audience related to this particular package that we are discussing. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion, please make it in the affirmative or negative to, I'll bounce back here so I can say this correctly, accept or decline the recommendation regarding Police Department renovation business as recommended by staff.
I'm able to approve staff's recommendation on five-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, nine-hundred dollars renovation, please, for.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen? And Mayor.
Yes. Look forward to that, it'll be exciting, more exciting every day. Next action item, and Phil will read, so we'll go back. Consider setting date for the first meeting in January two thousand thirteen. We found out a while back that because the state was moving themselves around, we had a change in our election dates coming forward, also into January. That day falls on January first, which is a legal holiday, and I know none of us want to be sitting down here on a legal holiday, so we need to move that, maybe a date for the special meeting, so we can do that. Did you have a date in here, Wednesday or Thursday, the first week of January, because you're admitting by staff, and I guess Tuesday would be the second or third?
I'd like to do it on Thursday.
Yeah, I'd like some to, that works for me, it's, we don't miss a day, it's church or.
And Mayor, I need to, we need to place up that resolution, eight hundred, that the actual, it's, it's April eleventh through April thirteenth, but it's actually Wednesday through Friday. And she's made that change, because you're going to sign it, but if you're looking at it tonight, the morning, take Monday to Wednesday, it's actually Wednesday.
Right, okay. So basically, at this point, are we, I don't look at this. Okay, so we're basically doing both of these at the same time. The second part of this is we are setting. Okay. And the second thing we're also facing is the filing period, which would be Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twelve, through April thirteenth, Wednesday. Those are corrected here, yours may say something different, but we're also setting.
It should be Wednesday.
She hasn't, she hasn't.
Okay, let me ask you a question, we've usually done that Monday through Wednesday, is that something that the state moved on?
The election board gave us those dates.
The election board did that.
Yeah. Well, no.
No comment. So, we will change that, I apologize, that's not something that, Wednesday, April eleventh, through Friday, April thirteenth, two thousand twelve, we are setting that as the period where the offices that are open will file for the election. Any questions or comments related to this particular resolution, number eight hundred? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution eight hundred.
Second.
But the motion would also have to change the date to our first meeting in January the third?
Yes. So we're basically, overview, we're changing the first meeting to Thursday, January the third, two thousand thirteen, and we're also moving our filing period, setting it up as Wednesday, April eleventh, two thousand twelve, through Friday, April thirteenth, two thousand twelve. The one thing that I would point out, if you're going to do it on Thursday, you're essentially going to do about forty-eight hours, where we can't have a forum for anything. Something unforeseen happens, and we're not going to be able to vote on anything.
Well, maybe we ought to do it on Tuesday.
Well, that's the, is that not the holiday?
Can we do it on Wednesday during the day?
Sure.
Whenever you want to do it.
Whenever you want to do it.
Whatever we do it at noon, I want to do.
Would that work with the staff, if you did that? Or if they'd rather do it at one o'clock?
I was going to make it worse to do the swearing-in, right?
So, I mean, what? But I'd say, suggest let's do it Wednesday during the day then. Yeah, we'll just leave it to, you know, the guys to let us finish time.
Yeah, we have to set it, that's the only thing.
Twelve noon.
Twelve noon.
Is that good?
I'll change my motion to Wednesday, twelve noon, which would be the second of January, and also approve Resolution eight.
So we've made those adjustments, Wednesday, twelve o'clock, special meeting, the swearing-in, and then also changes for the open filing period for the open offices.
So when will we have our real, our meeting then?
If we don't, I mean, we can, we can determine that at some future time, but if we don't need a meeting, we could go to the second meeting in January, it just kind of.
But we approve our claims at the first council meeting, so that would delay the city's payments being approved.
Okay, then I anticipate we would have an actual meeting after the swearing-in.
At noon?
At noon. I mean, that's, it's open for us to do whatever we want to, but if we need to pay bills, which is the point here by King and I, you are right, then why don't we just, it's a meeting, we'll just do it all by then. And hopefully it'll be then. If not, people may miss lunch.
I won't be, oh, yeah. Don made a motion?
We have a motion for Don, and we are meeting at twelve o'clock, January the second, two thousand thirteen, and we are moving filing period to Wednesday, April eleventh, through Friday, April thirteenth, as the, as time is designated here. And we have a motion to say.
And I have a question.
Okay.
On the Councilman representing for two, beginning at, that means this be noon?
Yes, twelve o'clock.
Okay, then I will change that to.
Yes, be noon to noon, twelve o'clock, to Wednesday, January the second, two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
State makes us work off of our. So, is there any questions as to what, what we're voting on, has everybody kind of got it? Okay.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. And I would tell you as a postscript to that, I know we've talked, but I would reiterate that, in my mind, we need to fix that problem before the next election rolls around. I like the November election, but I do not like setting it to where you have to file in April. It's just too far out front, so if we can, and even if we have to have the cost of having an election and setting our own dates to do so, upcoming to the final vote, that would be in November. We've talked with Steve, and I anticipate that will be coming from staff, it's important.
We'll make it an agenda item, because we, we are unclear exactly how you feel and what you want, so we'll do that in the very near future.
That'd be great, as long as we're so, it's time to get it to the public to let the public vote on it. Thank you for understanding that. We'll move on to Consider Nomination for Trustee for O'Malley Municipal Assurance Group Board. This is an action item that comes up fairly regularly, and there are two openings, they have several names here, Steve, any comments on this?
Whoever you would like to nominate, who would raise your attention.
Well, they didn't recommend anybody, did they?
They didn't recommend anybody?
No, they've just had.
No, they didn't recommend anybody, if you have anybody you'd like to recommend to be on the ballot.
Who's from O'Malley? Nobody.
First lady for Cow.
Oh, yes.
Do you guys, I mean, Steve, is this something you're interested in? Got a real complaint?
I mean, yeah, if the council wants me to be more than one, I'm unable to have this one.
I would point out that, of course, you know, nomination doesn't, success rate, but it's definitely one of those things that. If, and I, I don't really have anyone in particular, but I notice there are managers, and there are city treasurers, administrators, there's different folks along those lines, so I would entertain a motion to nominate, for our particular nominee, Steve, you are City Manager, to the Order Trustees of O M A G. I just made, I just needed to.
So moved. We'll change it from mine.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, appreciate that.
We also, we, we need her to position. I suggest we go ahead, but just.
That, that would be, to nominate her, basically use our vote for, to nominate her, our second position. We have one, I read through this, and.
There's two positions.
Two positions, yeah.
Each nominee, dah 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 dah.
Yeah.
Up to two, sounds good to me. Second part of this, we'll entertain a motion to use our second nomination for Patty Shalit, the Town Clerk Treasurer of the Town of Fort Collins.
So moved.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Steve, you better call around and give us what the towns to vote for. Because it looks to me like what they're doing, rather than having nominees, they're just assending everyone's.
Yeah.
Yeah, just press, press submitted, put it on, yeah.
That's how it makes.
Next action item, Consider Resolution eight oh one regarding Street Dedication of the Boulevard of Champions as a public thoroughfare. And it's one of those things that I think is very exciting, and if you haven't driven down it, you should, it's, it's neat. Well, it's quite a show, some days, I'm thoroughly impressed, so, and hopefully everybody, Steve, do you have any comments on this?
The planning commission has approved, and unanimously to accept it, staff, do a, recommend acceptance of the easement and public road utilities.
Sorry, guys, I thought maybe some of our stuff, we got a picture of the location and stuff. Any questions or comments for Steve regarding this, accepting this Boulevard of Champions as a public thoroughfare on the council? Is anyone in the audience? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution eight zero one.
Second. Councilman Huglen?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Burdo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And.
Yes. Next action item, Request Optimization for Issuance of Special Event Beverage License for Red Knights International Motorcycle Club for the weekend of September seventh, two thousand twelve. Steve, you want to give us an overview on this?
Yeah.
I want to see what you say.
Oh, I, I'm actually, to be honest with you, I'm going to turn it right over to Steve, let him, I told him to present.
That's great.
In the letter there, I stated the fact that we're going to have an event, and it's going to happen for the Red Knights Motorcycle Association, State Association, we're going to have people host that event on September the eighth. And we, around that same time period, we always have a benefit for local county youth services, part of our, our chapters happen to do some type of. And we, around that same time period, we always have a benefit for Multicity Youth Services as part of our, our chapter that happened to do some kind of benefit event. And we're gonna combine this to make this a three-day long event down at the park, and Rotary Park, the rodeo around. We tried it last year, it expanded a little bit, got some favorable results on it, so we'll make it a three-day event, see if we can bring more people into town, more people in town spend more money. And along with most motorcycle events, there will be some, some beverage drinking. And we wanna have the access to that so the city can get their cut out of it too, and be, say, can be pretty much controlled. It's gonna be a controlled environment down there, there's one entrance into the park, one same entrance out. We have security lined up for that with all the Red Knights, we have at least nine people I know of, two to three chapters that are gonna help sponsor this, that are clean certified. And we already talked to the chief about it, people want patrols through there too, anybody worried about that? Friday night's event, it's gonna be a purpose, beans and bikes, anybody's welcome to show up, we eat five dollars. Saturday, we'll be camping in the park, Saturday is the event, we have a poker run for Multicity County, so we'll have bike games that afternoon along with the bike show, the band's gonna play that evening. Sunday, CMA's already agreed to do church service for bike church on Sunday night. And we just like this to get the color, especially if we do have vendors that do wanna sell down there and, and order to be, to get a license to sell down there, right, giving us a special event.
Is that the only place the license would apply at that at the park? Is that the only place the license would apply would be in the park?
That's, that's where the events happen, that's, we're on Kickstand Route sixty-six, that's, that's where that event's gonna happen. If they wanna come to the Route sixty-six museum or go elsewhere, buy food and stuff, that's great, we wanna get them in here, in town first.
Do you anticipate any food vendors down there as well?
I'm talking to a local business owner here about putting a trailer down there. And if he can't do that, or they cannot do that, we're gonna ship all the business up here for breakfast to that vendor, because they have already expressed interest in helping us out. So we're gonna, we're gonna reward them by sending anybody up there for breakfast. I carry around nine o'clock, nine thirty, whenever the poker run is gonna start. We'll have some people staying there, but we'll have people coming down right that morning. Most of them gonna stay overnight, so Saturday night. Nine o'clock, our poker run should be over, but we're back by about noon, so everybody has a chance to eat. Bike show starts at one thirty, with the bike games right after that, that'll last about three hours, and then other, other events will happen down there after.
Any questions by council? Any questions by anyone in the audience related to this event? Didn't see anybody. I have one question, how important do you think to this event the selling of low alcohol beverages will be?
People gonna come to it anyways, and beer, beer will stay up there, the beer's gonna be there anyways. You know, where they come up here, push up, buy their twelve pack, take the saddlebag and try to keep calm. I mean, it's gonna happen, it happens there every year, the rodeo. If anybody walks around the building, or around trucks and cars and trailer down there, they'll say it been, been. And if you're blind, you're blind, you know it happens. This way we can control it, we can control, I mean, to a point we can control how much somebody buys. Because I've already talked to one of the vendors that wants to show up there. We're gonna require everybody that goes, buy one of our cooties, that's a, that's a fundraiser for Multicity County, that they have to, since it is a family event. There's no visible there, that's great, but that's probably when you sign your name on, they'll pay you five dollars to get in, because you do a pretty good bet, that's what, compared to the cooties. Just kinda keep it out of sight, out of mind, but it's gonna be there.
Chief, do you have any comments you wanna add to this? You're welcome to back off if you don't have a comment, that's not a problem.
I, I don't have one.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments?
Counsel, I will say that, that any authorization you give to allow alcohol in the park is contingent on the fact that they must get a state license. So, just so you know, by doing this tonight, if you approve or not, but if you do approve it, the state license is required for them to get a special event before they can come to the city, their authorization, but then you can sell that.
Any comments, Steve?
I don't have any other comment. I did look at the codes and stuff like that, I talked about this, and that was one of the prerequisites was they had to have an able, able issued license before they can get the city license, the special license from the city. And then to get the special license from the city, you have to declare it a special event. I mean, it's not gonna happen down there every weekend, it's just one-time event. Hopefully it'll be a yearly event, but...
Looks like one's done pretty hard on this.
I've done a lot more than just this, there's some other, other stuff, discussion about the upgrade facility down there so we can bring more against this bike event to the, to the park too, but we'll talk about that at a later time.
Comment quickly. Any other comments before we take action on this?
I'd just like to say, I, I think, I'd like to see the, the event be a success, and, and Steve's done a lot of work on it, and, you know, think if there's anything we can do to, to help it be a success, I, I think we, we should give it a chance.
I'll make a motion, we, we should question.
I'll say it.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith? Yes. And Mayor?
I will say that I have a longstanding opinion of mine, and I, I will not vote no, but I will abstain. And I've made that known for a long time, it's not political, it's just one of those things that I would wish nothing but the best, you know, I support you, but I've, I've made that comment over and over again, and I think it would be really hypocritical of me at this point, for the people I have pushed to the no side, to vote anything but abstain or no, so I will abstain. We'll move on to the next one, discuss and consider improvements to Nance Rotary Park, and I know these photos we've got here are less than beautiful, so we have wonderful assistance of Rhonda Williams, and she was kind enough to do this. And pass it down that way. And I, I had one sitting on my table, so I'm guilty of leaving it there, she was kind enough to... And I think these are a little bit more feasible.
Yeah, I apologize for that, I'm not a engineer or a, I have all the graphics.
You're fine, it gets, Steve Hewitt, do you have any comments or?
Well, I think obviously, the main thing the city will always do is follow the code, and, and I think Steve made, our conversations, that he understands that, and he has challenges on the fact that it's in the flood, flood plain. But I think, so I think he has some thoughts on portable trailers or showers for events, and I think that's, that's probably a good, a good way to look at that, and I think we can maybe work with lots of infrastructure water to help the rodeo ground and then for those events, we can work with them on some of those things. Now, that's basically what we talked about at this point.
The first page of this, that has the front side and rear view of the building that I was wanting to cut down there, and this is for everybody's use, for the rodeo club, I talked to them, I went to a couple of their meetings, they wanted to have junior events here. And junior events happen Friday, Saturday, Sunday, maybe into Monday, because they had so many people show up, there was not enough facilities down there to handle that kind of bathroom, you know, usage. And I've talked to Robert Downe, city, city governor, inspector, and the way he's changed the rules, has probably gonna be a done deal trying to put this building down there unless it's on thirty-foot stilts. And that's gonna jack the price way up, and then you're gonna have problems with handicapped accessibility in a public building. So these plans were great, but I don't see it happening anymore. The sewer, sewer line on page three, there is a manhole there on the east side of the little road going in there, that's where we were planning on hooking the, the bathroom facility, shower facility. We'd like to get a, a sewer cleanup pipe set right in there somewhere so that we can set this portable trailer up. I don't know if anybody's worked a hurricane or tornado or whatever, other than Steve and myself, but there are several portable style trailers that are just gonna self-contain except for sewage. You gotta have this put down, otherwise it acts up quick. And other than hooking the trailer up and driving down to the sewer plant to offload, we'd like to get some kind of a permanent cleanup right there, set, set the trailer up to dump into, not like a dump station you see in RV parks. Yeah, the little box area on, on the map, that is just north of where that sewer, sewer line cuts across there, and...
Is it that one right there, Steve, right there, first people are sitting on?
Yeah, right over your arrows out there is a sewer manhole right there, the line runs from the northwest back to the southeast right across there. If we could get a, some kind of a sewer, no, right in that area right there to set the trailer up, that puts it close to electric, because one trailer we're looking at has air conditioning and lights for, for the evening time, and we wanna try to keep this close to electric and sewer, and the water's not too far from there. Now, it's actually page four where the sewer line is at, page three is the sewer line, the water line, but somewhere in that general vicinity, we'd like to get some kind of sewer cleanup, dump station.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was sitting here looking at my map and not rolling down.
That's the water line map right there, it's going out toward that, that twelve inch foot across there.
That would be this right here, is that, is that the downed line we put in a few years ago that goes across, the first time across the river?
No, that line's been in for fifty years.
What size is this?
It's actually a ten inch, it says twelve, but it's actually a ten inch.
It is, I see the ten inch now right there.
I have much trouble.
Oh, it's real simple.
I was thinking of one joint of pipe, and then turn up right into sewer manhole or two, there right there, and...
Less than a hundred dollars of material.
About three, about three pieces of concrete, just keep it from being run over and busted up.
Sure. And, Steve, anything?
Nothing the council helps out on now, I've got to find some money to rent a trailer.
And basically what you've come to is the point where you can't build in that place?
Pretty much, it's, it's a done deal. FEMA changed their flood plain rules, regulations, it's not this building itself, it's what it displaces downstream, causes back or upstream, how much it backs up. If we build on stilts and get it up out of the flood plain, it doesn't restrict water flow, and like I said, that makes it impossible to have handicapped facilities unless you put an elevator or put three hundred foot ramp out there, that's totally great, just what it needs to be for somebody to run a wheelchair up that ramp. We're trying to add a button to the edge right there to FEMA.
Is that it, Steve? Any questions by council for Steve Jones? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this that you'd like to make of Steve Jones at this point? He's put entertained questions, I'm sure he will. He's not out of practice.
No, I'm not.
Give him a couple of months, he'll look at me like, I don't answer any questions, so. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
Bike myself, I like the idea of bringing more bikers to town.
It's exciting, I, it's exciting.
I don't know if anybody really noticed how many bikes come through this town, but you get, you set up a stoplight by KSC, other than the museum, watch how many bikes come through here, starting about next month. It's amazing how many bikes come through here. That's what we're gonna use, this kick, we're playing on the kicks on Route sixty-six on. I take a trip three weeks from now, I'm headed to Enid, and over Santa Springs, I'm gonna hit different routes back this way on sixty-six, double my flyers. Then in June, I'm headed to California on bike, and I wanna do the same thing in Apple. We're gonna try to capitalize on sixty-six, get Hewitt in there and certain. Those of our bike events are already happening April, May, June, and then it's slack off in the summer, a few in the fall, and we're probably one of the only ones in state that has one in the fall, and September.
Did you say you are going to rent those possibly?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to have bathroom facilities. Facilities that are down there in the old, or Roundup Club building, the Square Dance hall, there's two bathrooms. And at about thirty minutes into a rodeo, the back end, they just can't handle, handle the crowd. And we're thinking along the same lines as the rodeo, and that amount of people on Saturday.
I know from when we had the mayor's conference here, people come to Clinton, I've invited so many people I've seen that said, hey, we went back to Clinton, so, once they come to Clinton, they know what's here, they know what's here, a lot of times they make a trip back.
We're gonna try to throw a good party down there so that people wanna come back. The first year we had the nine-one-one poker run kids, we had more door prizes than we had participants. A couple of times we got ranked out, had to reschedule, and the second year we had just about the same type of deal, we had enough door prizes for everybody, everybody went home to winter, so they told their friends, and last year was great, we, we had a fun season last year. And this year, just getting a little bit more, we have a little more events, and we're gonna try to get, I know we won't ever get to bikes, blues, and barbecue in Fayetteville Arkansas, but I'm gonna get up there pretty good.
We appreciate your efforts, comments tie this thing together.
What he's asking for is extremely feasible in our sense, we can help him, help him out. I think he would also, but it would, not, just to make a point, it wouldn't just be helping Steve, it would also help the rodeo, and other events that could come in the future.
Talking with the Roundup Club, they have, you know, when you have the rodeo, there's a lot of the trailers that come in, they have, in the front part, and they run off generators, but they still got to dump that whole thing somewhere.
Yeah.
Either that or the...
Be nice to have a spot down there here too.
Be nice to do that for that. And it's not just the rodeo, I mean, if we had a park and park down there, or some other type of event, you know, outdoor summer type events, we've got the perfect situation right there, plenty of parking, plenty of shade trees, silos.
Are the, are the city, is the city gonna be responsible for the waste management pickup? You know, are we gonna be responsible for cleaning up this?
No, we're after that, after this. In the, on the last paragraph, as I said, if we're gonna approve it for a special event, then I'd like to have at least two dumpsters, two more than what's down there, that's how I play by the air, we don't know for sure, but, you know, we've got two of the large dumpsters to start off with, and we need more. I know Arnold's gonna bring in a gills, somebody, give me another down there on Saturday, I need, and Red Knights is gonna take care of the park, we will, we will take care of it. He said we're handling security for it, we're gonna have insurance through our international, I've got to send that out here in the next, next month, because we had to have everything built and rolled before we had an event like this.
I think it's great, I know my age now, but I was playing softball as a park coed, and way back then, it was always packed on the weekend.
We wanna pack it in there, we're gonna do it.
I hope you have a successful event, you make a lot of money for the benefit of Multicity Youth Services.
We have, every year, we've had this, like I said, the first year we had ranked out, but every year after, since then, we've increased the amount of money we'll be able to donate to Multicity County. This year, it was, it's even pumped, it pumped, and we had some other things working for them.
Any other questions by council or any questions out in the audience? I guess it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve necessary expenditures, or is it something under your authority?
I can take care of this thing.
Do you wanna, you wanna motion just for the motion?
I think supportive of the event, I mean, I think you've already, I think you've already called it a special event, so actually, we may have actually, you've already called it a special event, I mean, it's fine, you're fine. Unless you're the only one to vote.
No, I wanna, I wanna vote yes on something. How about we have a motion to support the event at Nance Rotary Park with the necessary programs that the state will take care of?
Say it.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith? Yes. Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Oh, boy, I just minimized it. I believe that's the last action item we have, so we'll move on to the managers' report for the city plan.
Basically, council, I mean, I was mentioning the white dog, and I actually wasn't for the works, I appreciate that, Arnold. And where, you'll see Cruz out spraying a lot for parks, and we're kind of, we're kind of getting in, in that spring, summer mood, I guess you could say, so you'll see how folks doing that. Soccer season started, softball, baseball seasons around the corner, so we are preparing ourselves. We are also in the middle of budgets, preparing for budgets, staff's in extremely good mood, is getting work on that, employee training too, so we'll be working on that here the next few weeks as well, so, just a quick update on a couple of things.
Where are we at on fire safety?
I wish, I wish I could tell you that we'll be built and ready for our operations in a couple of weeks, but that's not true. As Jeff told us a couple of weeks ago, one of the things we're waiting on is the property, which was posted in the newspaper last week, correct? Fifty days from that point, we'll also, we are starting demolition, Arnold will start... Fifty days from that point, we'll also, we are starting demolition, Arnold will start demolition with his crews on two of the homes, the twenty-fifth, we do the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Twenty-sixth, and then at that point, within a couple of weeks later, we'll start the demolition of the other two properties, we're going to bid hopefully here in April, is our goal. We will have a report for you, required of that, on ninety percent, where we sit, where things are at, some estimates budget-wise, which we think will fine, so we'll bring that to you in a few more weeks. So, where things are progressing right now.
When is our, at the budget meeting, you live in May, the May?
Yeah, I'll send a confirmation out for your next meeting to tell you what they do. About thirty-five, thirty.
Come in quickly, like I said, it's already, I believe it's already March the sixth, so we're a couple of months away from it. Any other questions or comments for the city manager regarding his report ready, or from the council? Seeing any, any audience participation, any question or comment for anything in the city, this would be your opportunity at this point to ask a question about anything, yes, sir?
I just have some questions about some land that the city owns.
Okay.
Especially the land that, where the city, where the city, where the landfill, I don't know if that's.
It would be appropriate now, we'd be glad to answer your questions, but it might be more appropriate for you to say, as far as, to talk, has he talked to you yet?
I think he did talk to Robert Downe.
Okay.
In Dover.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, basically, as you know, counsel, we've been, we are working through some, some property issues with the racetrack, and that is not, it's not cleared up as yet, so we cannot post that, we pulled it off the sale, so until that's cleared up, it's not ready at this point. I don't really have any good answer, I apologize, except that it's still in staff's items.
Is there any other properties that the city would maybe consider selling, or?
I'll tell you what, if you just stick around after the meeting, I'd like to visit with you about, we can talk a little more about some other areas we have.
I know, like, right now, what we do out there with pallets and all that, I know it's a fire hazard, so, in a way, it might benefit the surroundings.
I would say get with Steve after the meeting, just because it's facilitated, it'll facilitate it, and we don't all sit in it, you know, but get with Steve, he'll talk to you, we do have some property available that I think would fit your needs, and so I would encourage that, if that works for you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments related to city business by anyone in the audience? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or convene a meeting of the city of Clinton, the city council.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodeau?
Yes.
Councilman Hewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor?